Morning, Ms. Sullivan.
We're ready. Okay. Good morning. Let's call the Planning Commission meeting to order at this time. Would like to have Craig Slay do our invocation, if you would please, sir.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you now. We acknowledge your presence here with us, Lord. We invoke your blessing on our time today. Father, I pray for the wisdom that comes from you to be imparted to us today as we consider the decisions that have to be made. I pray, Father, that what is heard and what is said today will be pleasing to you, will be in accordance with your will. Father, we will be obedient, and that, Father, we will consider our fellow men and the needs of our community. Father, that we will make the decisions that are in keeping with your word. Father, I pray for the men and women who are fighting for the cause of freedom in the dangerous places around our world. I pray, Father, for their safety and safe return, in the name of Christ.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. Okay, at this time, we have considerations and approval of August 28, 2014 minutes. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Old business.
Okay, the first item under old business is a conditional use request for Derrick Boyd at 680 Highway 469 South. The property is on the west side of 469, just north of Foster Road. It's a 36-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1A. This is family land. There's one home already on the property. This is his site plan, showing the placement of his mobile home here. His grandmother has this acre and a home on it. This is his mother's property. And then, the 36 acres belongs to his grandmother as well. This is a view of the existing home that's on the property. This is the grandmother's home, his mother's house. And this is the location where the mobile home will be placed. The property has been posted, and we published the notice of the hearing in the paper, but no calls have been received.
You want to approve?
That was just a review for Monday, October 6.
Are all these for October 6?
These are, that we're reviewing, yes, sir, under old business.
Sounds great, thank you. Lee?
The second item is a conditional use request for Robert Lloyd on Old Fannin Road. The property is located on the east side of Old Fannin, just north of Regatta Drive. He's requesting a conditional use for construction of an upscale express car wash. The property is a .95-acre parcel. It's a vacant part of this larger 9.68-acre parcel that's owned by Dr. Charles Brown. The property is zoned C2. This is the existing bowling alley on that property. This shows the .95 acres. And this is a view of it also off of Old Fannin. This is the entrance coming into Dr. Brown's property in the bowling alley. This is his site plan. You'll enter off of the existing driveway for Dr. Brown and come in, come through the car wash. The vacuums are here, and right now, they're showing a possible exit only, but that, you know, will be something we'll have to look into when we do the site plan review and architectural review. But they can exit back out onto the existing driveway of Dr. Brown, and then back out onto Old Fannin.
Oh, that would be going out to Old Fannin there?
This one goes out to Old Fannin, right here.
That's the existing that goes out to Old Fannin?
That's right.
They would have to change their layout somewhat.
Okay, these are just pictures of what their car wash will be similar to, either one of these two franchises, a finish line, or a ton of car wash.
My goodness.
Mr. Lloyd is just trying to see if he can be approved for this use. If he is, he will have to come back for the site plan architectural review. These are surrounding properties. This is Fannin Plaza, which is just north of the entrance to Dr. Brown's property. This is a view of that lot where it would be built out in front of the bowling alley. And then, this is south where Regatta joins Dr. Brown's property. A little further south is Penn's. And then, this is across the street. We posted the property, and the notice was published in the paper. We've received three calls in opposition.
Okay.
Okay, next is a dimensional variance request for Samuel and Chondrell Long on Brant High Street. Brant High actually comes down and turns back to the east and dead ends. This property is below that area. It's a 1.48-acre parcel that's zoned RE1. They're requesting a 5.7-foot variance from the 100-foot minimum lot width requirement. This property is part of an estate that has been divided, and Samuel's mother owns this house right here, the home. This is, the road turns back to the east here and dead ends. She's granted them an easement to come across her property and access their parcel. We posted the property and published the notice in the paper, but no calls have been received. Okay, the last item under old business is a conditional use request for Bob and Jeanette Hall at 1015 Fortune Drive. Fortune Drive is off of Trickenbridge Road. They're requesting the conditional use to place a manufactured home there. It's a two-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. They are retiring and want to move to be close to their son. This is just their site plan, showing a double-wide mobile home. This is a view coming in along Fortune. And these are just surrounding properties. The mobile home will be in this area right in here. This is at the very end of the road. We posted the property, and the notice was published, but no calls have been received.
Is Fortune Drive a private, private road?
It is, and it's family, all family.
Okay. Any more questions? Is that all of old business?
That's it.
New considerations?
Okay, the first item under new considerations is a conditional use request for Deborah Lindsay at 124 Durkove. Durkove is off of Andrew Chapel Road. It's a one-acre parcel at the very end of the road, zoned RE1. She had a mobile home here that burned in 2007, and she's asking to replace it with a 1999 16-by-80 mobile home. There's one home already on the one acre. She has received approval from the State Department of Health to install a new sewer system on the property. And this is just a view of where the mobile home will be placed. And these are adjoining properties on Durk. Ms. Lindsay is here, if y'all have any questions for her.
What model home did you say it was?
1999.
How far can we go back? What is our regulations?
We usually look at anything older than a 99.
So, how does it work?
Before they move it.
You look at it before they move it? Okay.
To make sure that it's safe and...
And they would meet all the requirements as far as skirting and everything else that we require?
That's correct.
Got you. Okay. So, we're setting a public hearing on this?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to set that public hearing? Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the second item is a rezoning request for Kevin Myers on Ehrlich Road. This property is just outside the city limits of Florence. He's requesting to rezone 128 acres from RE1A to RE1. He plans to develop the property into a private subdivision. He's calling Saddle Ridge. It will be a gated community with private road. Will have restrictive covenants with 2,200 minimum square foot of heated area. And there's going to be approximately 16 to 18 large lots. RE1A doesn't allow the development of subdivisions, so he's requesting the RE1.
You're taking action on that?
Set the hearing.
Set the public hearing.
Yeah, I make the motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? Did you say that he's looking at 2,200 square foot homes? Is that what I heard?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
No, he's gonna, it's actually gonna be kinda like mini farm, really size. You can buy lots from three acres up, and you kinda set your size you want.
Wonderful. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use request of Wendy Yocum at 173 Brewer Road. Wendy is requesting the conditional use to place a manufactured home for her parents who are disabled. She needs to have them close so she can help care for them. It's a five-acre parcel that's zoned RE1A. Wendy's home is already on the property, so this will be the second dwelling. This is Wendy's house. This is the area where the mobile home will be placed. And these are just other properties in that area.
This is dead end road.
Wendy and her parents are here, if you have any questions for them.
Okay.
I make the motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, next is a conditional use request for Raymond Foxworth on Gablewood Trail. Gablewood is off the west side of 471. It's a 2.06-acre parcel that's zoned RE1. It's a vacant wooded lot. He's asking to place a 2014 28-by-56 mobile home on the property. This is just a view of the property. And these are surrounding properties in that area. Stephen Milner is here, representing Mr. Foxworth, if you have any questions.
Good morning.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to set this public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the last item is a conditional use request for Sheila Kraft at 174 South Eagle Ridge Drive. The property is on the west side of South Eagle Ridge, which runs off of Mulliken Road. She's requesting a conditional use permit to build a second dwelling. The home will be for her parents who have medical issues. She needs to help care for them. She's gotten an approval from the State Department of Health to install the sewer system. It's a three-acre parcel zoned RE1. And Mrs. Kraft is here, if you have any questions. You can see her house on the property. And then, this is actually a view of her property, but you can't see her home from the road, so you won't be able to see the other structure either. And these are just surrounding properties.
She's also made contact with some of the adjoining neighbors and everything, so...
And she's here, if y'all have any questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to set that public hearing?
I make the motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, is that all with new considerations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, site plan architectural review?
Okay, we have a site plan architectural review for the Point Church at 1120 Star Road. This is the area, you can see the existing church. This is the existing facility now. They're asking to add a 40-by-50 addition to the rear for a fellowship hall. This is just the floor plan. And then, these are the elevations. It's gonna match the existing church materials and colors. And David Hegwood is here, if y'all have any questions.
Okay. On the existing, is it, how much is it gonna match as far as, you gonna be able to tell it's an existing, I mean, the addition?
It'll be seamless.
Seamless?
Yeah, I mean, we're using the same outside, all the architect that we had on previous.
Right.
We're moving it forward and just adding on. We will have no more further development in that direction.
Right.
It's, we have just run out of room already since we've opened up, and we need a fellowship hall slash youth area.
Which is a great problem to have.
Glad to have it, and we hope that you guys will approve us for this, but there's some applications with the firewall and other things that we're trying to get worked out right now with this.
Right.
But once we can get past that, we're wanting to move forward with this as quickly as possible in that area. And then, when we come back the next time and leave for the main hall that we're gonna build, which will be fully animated with drawings and everything.
Right. And you're, how far off the road are you off of?
Probably four miles.
Yeah, I knew you were back in there.
No one would even know we took that unless we told them.
Exactly. Just make sure you work with John and Renee on the firewall and everything, to meet specifications and everything, so we need to have a vote on that. Is that correct? I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank y'all. Okay, is that all we have? Okay, the next meeting will be held Thursday, October 30th at 9:00 a.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Y'all have a good day. Okay. At this time, we'll call to order the meeting of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors on a work session. Let's see, at this time, we have attendees, discussion items, JH&amp;H Architects, Planners Interiors, PA Jeff McGee and Carl Franco, report on the status of a current Chancery Court building. Good morning, guys.
Pleasure to be here.
Well...
Of course, as you know, the board has engaged us to do some preliminary studies on the Chancery Court building and the Justice Court, just to look at the compliance of the ADA and some other issues. And this is just a status report today. We have started that process. We're here mainly today to talk about the Chancery Court building, although we have visually walked through both facilities. The process is, you know, is to go through visually, observe the existing conditions, and then go through and compare it to what it meets and what it complies with the existing codes. And then, at the end of it, come up with some cost estimates on the process for making any improvements. So, that's where we're at today. It's just basically a status report. We're looking at, some of the issues we're looking at is how it does comply, any areas where it needs to be upgraded. We're looking at the feasibility of the facilities, how they're functioning in that aspect with compliance to codes. And that's really the main focus of our review. Our intentions are to have this wrapped up in the month of October, and then come back before the board, and your meeting, your first meeting in November, with some cost estimates, with a review of the cost compared to updating the existing facility, and possibly cost comparisons if there was a desire to build a new facility. So, that's where we're really at here today. Be glad to answer any questions that the board may have, if you have anything.
We'll probably, we'll be before the board during the October 30th, I believe, work session.
Correct.
With a more itemized cost for that.
So, you'll be able to tell us if this can be refurbished and/or the cost estimate towards that versus possibly a new building or whatever, whichever way is best feasible to give to the board? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. We'll have, we'll have a comparison of both. And of course, these will be based on the conceptual estimates that we're going with. They won't be based on any actual new plans, but they will be based on experience that we have with new court facilities and renovation costs. But we will be able to get that information to the board to help you make an informed decision on that.
So, whenever you do that, are you going to include the possibility of a third courtroom?
We can't, yes, sir.
I think that'd be wise.
Yeah, we probably need to look at that because of the future growth and everything else. I know in the past, we've, you know, we've been told we're gonna get a third chancellor, and then we're told we may not, but inevitably, we probably will in the future, so we may need to look at something like that.
Well, just in your calculations of the possibility of rehabbing the existing facility, that needs to be included.
I do think that's prudent, because if you do make renovations to the existing, then you have to take that into account. Of course, a new facility would have to take that into account and add square footage, so we will include that in the report.
With your report, is it going to include our justice court needs?
Well, we're, I don't know that we'll have it by November 1st, but we are in the process of doing, of doing both of them. We're really focusing, because of the court order, on the Chancery Court right now, but we will, yes, sir, we will have that eventually. You need, is it desirable to have that also at that time?
Well, I think honestly that both of these, we're gonna kinda need to make a decision at the same time, aren't we?
Well...
We can't, we need to make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, actually, with the exception of the court order, I feel like they were both equally, we really had them both set pretty much on an equal priority. And the court order changed some of that, obviously, but to answer your question, I think, yes, they're, it is just as, is in the same mix as the Chancery.
We'll go, we'll go ahead then and put that, so we can present both of them at that time.
Well, I don't want to, you know, force you to give me unrealistic goals here, you know, so...
I think that's achievable. If we run into some issues, we'll advise the board, but at this time, we'll look at presenting them both, so you can have as much information available to you to make an informed decision as possible.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause it could be a domino effect, basically. You know, whatever you come up with, you know, this could, you know, do some transfers or whatever, you know? And that way, if you guys could look at all the different aspects of how this move could make this move, so with the, with the brilliance that you guys have in your minds, I can assure you, I think y'all will come up with some good ideas.
Can I get that in the court?
It's been recorded.
Motion, guys, for that conversation.
Any other questions, or?
I think that you've kinda cleared up a lot, you know, if you can, and I know that, I guess, the entire month of October, y'all are really gonna be working 24/7, it sounds like, so to get us ready for November.
We want to give as much accurate information as possible. And again, there's some assumptions that have to be made, but we want to have them based on good information.
Was there anything you need from us?
Not right now, I don't believe.
No, no, we just wanted to give you a status update.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Got old business, minutes approval, August 28, 2014, and September 15, 2014 minutes. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Judy Fortenberry, tax collector. Good morning.
We have an issue that we have never had before. It's a, it was a bad check issue on old taxes, and to recommend that, we have to set a special sale, and you have to give the authority to do that. A tax sale for one parcel.
Never had that before?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
So, somebody came in to pay their taxes, and it was bad?
Well, it was an issue where they paid their taxes, it was a bad check. We sent it to the DA, but we didn't take it, we didn't reverse the charges so that it showed that it was paid. Then he came in again, paid another hot check. So...
So, do we get, do we get the money off of the bad check also, in addition to that? As in?
So, you say you sent it to the DA?
We do.
Good. Okay. So, we'll get that, plus we'll have a resale?
Right.
Okay.
So, you say it's sent to the DA, as in for prosecution?
If we, if we, what we did for bad checks?
Yeah.
We sent it back through the bank one time. If it comes back again, then we'll give it to the DA for them to try to collect.
Okay.
And...
My goodness.
It was just, it was just one of those weird situations.
Two times?
Yeah. And what was even more weird is that the guy that sent the check wasn't the man that owned the property. So, we finally got in touch with the man that owned the property. He may come in and pay this before the actual sale, which we're hoping to...
So, we're doing all this or nothing?
Well, you know, sometimes a threat works wonders.
Right.
But we do have to advertise it like a regular sale, so we have to have authority to advertise also.
I make the motion to set this sale date of October 22nd.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig Slay, Board Attorney.
The item for me this morning is a discussion of the contract or project agreement between Rankin County and the U.S. Department of Agriculture that's dated November of 1991. This is the Mill Creek Drainage Ditch discussion. There has been a lot of back and forth, I guess we should say, about the responsibility of the county to maintain the drainage ditch. And so, we now have a copy of the actual project agreement document that was entered between the county and USDA 20-plus years ago, that we can refer to, to determine, from a legal standpoint, what is, in fact, the obligation of the county under the agreement as it relates to that project. This was a half a million dollar project. It's called the Soil Stabilization Agreement between the county and USDA through the Soil Conservation Service. It was, it reflects that it applies to an approximate 2,000 feet of stream bank stabilization using rock riprap and wire mesh.
Gabions?
Okay. The county's obligation was to contribute 20% of the cost of the project, $100,000. That was done. The other obligations of the county are, there's about eight identified in the agreement. I won't belabor the point. The one that is obviously on the table for discussion is the paragraph that reflects, "Upon acceptance of the work from the contractor, the county is responsible for, quote, 'assuming responsibility for operation and maintenance of the emergency measures,'" which is the project. So, that is an obligation of the county. To whom is it obligated? The county is obligated to the Soil Conservation Service and the USDA to maintain this project. There are no time limitations. There's no scope limitations that I'm able to find. The contract is very plain in that respect. It doesn't say it'll maintain it for 20 years, or for 10 years, or for whatever. It just says that it will, in fact, assume the responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the emergency measures. Again, the obligation is to the Soil Conservation Service. How this has come to light is that individuals who live along this creek are asking for additional work or maintenance to be performed by the county under the agreement. I think clearly that the individuals who live there are foreseeable beneficiaries of the agreement. While the obligation is not directly to them, and while they would not have standing to pursue any sort of claim, in my legal opinion, they might, in fact, have standing. I can't say that for certain, but it's possible that they would have standing. But clearly, the county is obligated to maintain it. So, the question then becomes, what exactly is required of the county to maintain it? And that's where you're gonna have to rely on your road department and your engineers to let you know what, if anything, needs to be done. The, the interesting thing about this agreement is that it references an exhibit which would define the actual area where the project took place, and that exhibit is not with the document. So, what we have to go on is an approximate 2,000 feet of stream bank stabilization. Doesn't even say where. I mean, we know that it applies to Mill Creek. That's where the work went on. We know that. And I think we can look and see where, in fact, is the stabilization, the riprap itself? Where did that, where are the gabions? Where did that take place? And that is what we're required to maintain. We don't go beyond that. We don't move out... that. We don't move out from there onto private property. We focus on the 2,000 feet of riprap and gabions, and we tend to those issues. That is what is required under the document. We're going to, we're going to have to have the help of our professionals to know what needs to be done at this stage, if anything, to address the maintenance of that area. Okay? That was for the board. I'm not asking for you guys to take any particular action. I'm simply laying out to you what the legalities are. It was brought to our attention. If we do have a maintenance responsibility, I'm able to find from this document that that is so, and then it'll be up to you guys to decide where to take it from here. Who is it that's going to do a review, if necessary, and that type of thing?
Okay. If I let you ask a question, I'm sorry. I just...
I'll do it next week.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We've got all the information, and I think that it'd be appropriate that we talk about it between ourselves, and I think that, you know, I think that we should do something. It's just a matter of getting with Dale and figure out exactly which direction we need to take on this.
Why don't we have Dale and Buster look at it and report to us what they feel like we need to do?
I think that'd be...
We may not be doing something.
What do you think, Dale? Go ahead and do a review on that and see exactly what, you know, in that 2,000 foot, where the riprap area is, and report back to us and give us a clear understanding of what the detail is going to enhance.
Okay.
And just, you know, within the next couple of weeks, get to us and get back with us if you can. All right? That sound good to the board?
Yeah.
Thank you, Craig.
Yes, sir.
We'll hold, we'll hold up on the review of the...
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Laura Oster, County Administrator.
Thank you, gentlemen. First thing I have is the approval of the claims document amount of $2,165,987.5. This is to clear a period of purchase orders and anything that we have outstanding, so it doesn't go into next year's budget.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. The second thing I have is another cleanup for the end of the year. We need the authority to cancel outstanding checks that are one year or older. If anybody brings a check to us past this time, we'll research it, and if it is due, we'll redo the check for them.
Most to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The next item is authority to amend the FY '14 budget as of September 30th to reflect the actual receipts and the expenditures for the fiscal year 2014.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. The next item is authority to accept the proposal on the FY 2014 and '15 audit from Berzog CPA Company in the amount of $32,890 annually, and to enter into that contract professional audit services for those years, and authority for the president to execute the contract.
Is this the one that's been doing it?
Yes, it is.
Everything look good?
Yes.
Did we, we didn't take quotes, did we?
No, we didn't. What, each, every two years when it's time to do a new contract, the audit, State Audit Department sends out a notification to CPAs that are on their list, and they hold a seminar that each one that will do a county audit has to attend. And at that time, they give a list to the counties and tell them that they have until a certain time to present something to the county that they wish to audit. And this was the only proposal or inquiry that we had this time.
Really? The only one?
Yes.
Okay.
And she was able to drop her price just a little bit from the time before because, as she told me, she has all of our spreadsheets and things done. She's done it for the last two years and so...
So, she was pretty much used to it, yeah. Wonderful.
Is this the range we started at, though, when she first did it?
What's that?
This $32,000?
It's been running around $34,000.
From the beginning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. The next item is authority to enter into a service agreement via a purchase order for the logo design with Ryan Miller designed for an amount not to exceed $1,100, and this will include unconditional use of the new county digital logo. A group met, and we have given some thoughts and ideas that Rusty conveyed to Mr. Miller, and see what he comes up with for the county.
Most approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. The next item I have is ESNS. We need authority to issue a check to pay an invoice for PEB batteries that were replaced during the last election on June 24th, and they do not fall under the maintenance agreement that we have. An amount is, it's not on here, but I believe it's $740-something. We should have an exhibit there.
Would anyone like to back up on this?
$767.
They're not, though.
$767.50.
$725.
Why wouldn't it be in the maintenance agreement?
What, how is this not in the maintenance agreement?
These batteries were just not, were not included in it.
These are, these are the batteries that, what did Rusty say? These are batteries that, that are, these are, these are actually in the little PEBs. They're not in the machines.
Yeah, because they're in the machines. We'd have to be paying them to solder them out, and it'd be a lot more money. We already paid that one time, though.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
Okay.
These are just pop-in batteries. Okay. All right.
Yeah. And Craig just said they need to get purchase order next time they can pay for them.
They do, and this one was not done. We have asked him to open a purchase order for the next election. It comes up in case they do need batteries again.
So, do I have a motion to approve this request? Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Expensive batteries.
Say what? Do you second that?
No, I didn't second it.
Second by myself. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We'll get to those papers before too long, Jay.
I'm waiting. Man, that was timely, too, wasn't it?
The next item I have for you is discussion of potential action. We had a request by the 20th Circuit Court, Drug Court, to use the administrative section of our old Rankin County Juvenile Detention Center on Whitfield Road to conduct random drug testing for individual sentenced by the Drug Court. Ms. Haldago and Craig Slay, the sheriff and myself, met on this. Right now, they're testing out of the MDOC, and they have to do it really early in the morning or late in the evening, and they are requesting somewhere that they can do this random testing that they have. That was the only place that we could think of that would not present a problem with the number of restrooms that they have to have to do their testing, and...
So, we went from mothballing that place to using it again?
Now, I have somebody to maintain it. Good.
So, are they going to maintain it, or...
The proposal, right now, they have 57 individuals who are subject to the sentence of the Drug Court.
Right.
That they perform testing on. They expect that number to go up.
Okay.
The testing has to be random, which means that if they, if the facility where they do the testing is only available to them in certain periods of time, then you can see where that becomes a problem. It starts to lose its randomness. There's also issues, obviously, of privacy and the need for some space to do paperwork associated with the drug testing. They were, they were looking for a situation where they would not be interacting with or disturbing other functions of the county. So, this, this would be a good setup in that respect, and they, they are wanting to limit it just to the administrative part of that facility. So, that would limit the need for utilities and other things and all of that. So, we can still, as it were, shut down mothball the majority of that facility.
Okay.
It's got outdoor parking. It's got, it's got good ingress, egress.
Privacy.
Handicap.
Everything.
It's private.
So, do we have, do we have the, a way to shut down the part that is not needed to keep the, okay, so the utilities can be, can be broken out?
You know, we could actually go ahead and just move all of MDOC over there, get that element out of downtown Brandon once and for all, save us some money on rent since we're going to be utilizing that facility.
And we're going to be doing maintenance on it.
Right.
Obviously.
Mr. Bishop, you want to run that gamut?
I'm ready to vote for it and do it and have them move.
Me, too. Why would we need to keep paying rent?
Let's have a talk with MDOC before we do that vote.
Why? I mean, obviously, the commissioner don't want to do it, so, I mean, but he doesn't run Rankin County. We do.
That's exactly right.
I'm ready to do it, and if I get three votes, I'm going to make it happen.
What we need to do, I think, is to decide, I'd like to do that in two separate actions if we can. The first would be with respect to the request by the Drug Court itself.
Right.
Different animal altogether. This is, this is Rankin County Circuit Court.
Right.
Okay? So, what's before you is discussion. If you want to act, you're welcome to do so, to authorize us to finalize some sort of arrangement with the 20th Circuit Court, Drug Court.
Right.
For their use of that facility. So, that's, that's what's before you then.
I'll make the, well, go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve that part.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Have we want to add Jase as a discussion and potential action item for DOC to be relocated to the, what I call the old JDC building?
Yeah.
Is there any reason not to? I mean, is, as far as it being, I guess, facility being adequate, or whatever, is there any reason not to?
There's a couple of things at play here that, that I'm just simply not prepared to discuss. One is that there is, in fact, a lease agreement in place. I would assume that that lease agreement is between the county and the owner of that facility.
It is, yeah.
So, would you understand, Jay? All right. I've not seen that document, so I would want to address the issue of termination of that lease, Jay. I'd hate for you guys to authorize the relocation of DOC, but the document itself requires us to continue paying rent for some period of time?
Oh, no. Yeah. I'm not going to kick them out either, you know, but I...
No, I think something we look at, future, I mean, future, in near future, let you look into it.
Perhaps, Jay, that if I could compose it, it's, you're suggesting, let's go ahead and authorize their occupancy?
Yes.
And to be relocated there, but not necessarily forcing that issue, but go ahead and authorize them to...
That's a, that's a great way of putting it.
Yeah.
I'd like to make, put that in form of a motion.
All right. Got a form of motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? Let me ask you a question. So, are you, Mr. Slay, are you going to look into all of this?
Yeah.
And also contact the commissioner and work through all of those details?
I don't see there being too much intermingling there. I don't, I don't see where the commissioner's going to be in favor of that, but...
That's why I said, Mr. S...
I'm not going to be forward till we've addressed the commissioner about that, at least show them respect to that.
Exactly.
I think what we, where we...
We're just authorizing the use of...
Yeah. It helps your administrative staff if, if it's acceptable for them to relocate there. If there's no further action that we need, we just go ahead.
Well, how do we?
We can do the authorization anytime. We don't have to do that today, but...
Yeah, we can authorize, but doesn't mean that we actually are going to move them out there until you work through with the commissioner on this, correct?
That's true. But we're authorizing that it is, it is available, is basically what we're doing.
Okay.
We've done that before. We needed, he wasn't in favor of it, so...
Right. So, let's step out on that plank, and Mr. Slay, you'll be talking to the commissioner, correct?
Yes, sir. We got a motion, a second on that.
Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Aye. Motion dies for the lack of...
Two-two.
Two-two. But at this, with saying that, I'd like for you to proceed forward to speak to the commissioner on that.
And I need, I need to say the lease and I think we're probably good there, but I think we should...
Well, you know, because if we're going to be having, if they're going to use it for this, and we're going to have to continue maintenance on it, and they're paying, and we're paying rent on a building, why would it not make sense?
Well, I think there's some other things that do...
Other than it does something he doesn't want to do.
I think there's some other things that come into play. I'd just like to see Mr. Slay talk to the commissioner.
I'd like to know what they are. I mean, maybe, yes.
That'd be a good thing.
But I mean, I'm just saying, if we're going to have to do this, why don't we utilize the building?
If he can get this cleared up by the 6th, a, so be it. We can, we can vote by the 6th.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go over review of agenda items on October 6th.
Under, under me, I want to have one item for you, and that's an update on the FEMA safe room, and I hope by then have a little bit more information for you.
Well, we need to take up our consent agenda. Actually, there's some items on there I got some questions about.
On today's, or?
Yeah.
Today's one.
Today's? Yeah. We haven't moved it on yet.
I have a question about, uh...
Where did it, I didn't see it on here.
On other.
Well, can we just take them one by one, then?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. I missed it on here.
It's not on there.
Okay.
You didn't overlook it.
Okay, good. I'm glad I didn't overlook it.
Oh, it's, oh, okay.
Are you moving to add consent agenda?
Regular agenda, yeah. I need to make that a motion, please.
Aye. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop to add this consent agenda items to the regular agenda.
Somebody?
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay.
So, we're on the consent.
We'll start with it.
I guess, a, who's going to do this? Laura, you're Greg, or Craig?
The agenda, like we normally do, just to complete consent agenda.
No, we moved it to our regular agenda, so...
We moved everything to the regular, so we'll just take it one by one.
I can, I'll start off with this part of it. Under our financial reports, we have authority to transfer money from General County Fund in the amount of $403,113.03 to Fund 105, which is our solid base fund for the year in deficit.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The next item is authority to transfer from General County Fund in the amount of $25,778.37 to Fund 295, which is the Pele Hachi Sewer Bond for the year in deficit, and that will be refunded to General County upon receipt of the payment by the town of Pele Hachi.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. The next item is authority to transfer from General County Fund in the amount of $643,343.38 to Fund 350, which is our capital projects fund of 2005, to be refunded to General County upon receipt of the grant funds. That's the fund from which we are paying the FEMA safe room.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Well, I do have a question.
Nope. Any questions? Okay, what's your question?
Have we, where are we at on getting refunded? And there were some issues last week with generators and undersized.
And we don't have all that worked out yet, and that's why I have on the 6th to give y'all an update on the building.
Okay.
I'm trying to get some answers this week. However, as far as the, our third request that we have, which is a little over a billion dollars, I did talk this last weekend to Dawn Nolte. She's reviewing the paperwork, and hopefully, we'll get that to an end in a few weeks and reimburse this money.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay?
The next item is authority to enter into an hourly fee rate proposal for architectural services between Rankin County Horse Supervisors and JDC. between Rankin County Horse Supervisors and JHNA Architects for services related to the Chancery Court Building and the old courthouse, including ADA renovation feasibility, and the authority for the president to execute those documents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The next item is authority to enter into annual software maintenance agreement on behalf of Rankin County Share and PTS Solutions for the support, maintenance support in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from October 1, 14th to October 1, 15th for telephone support and modules and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? Is, um, on this part of it, does, uh, how much does Rusty get involved with all of this? Is this part of a unilateral type, or do?
Well, he has people that work in the, get the car radios and stuff.
As far as PTS and everything, PTS Solutions, is that unilateral, do you work with them on that too?
The computers, I mean. Didn't Hayden work with y'all? Yeah.
Okay, so it's Hayden, so basically, they work in unison on that?
Whatever, whatever, whatever Meg Graham suggests on PTS annual maintenance, I'm good with.
This is an annual thing that we do, this isn't the first time, this is just for the upcoming, we've done this for several.
Okay, alright.
We ask them for support constantly, so having a support contract was a good idea.
Okay, alright, good. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The next item is approval of requests from Northwest Rankin Athletic Association for the FY 2014 recreational funds in amount of five thousand dollars, contingent upon the organization satisfying the requirement that it be registered with Mississippi Secretary of State's office as a Mississippi nonprofit corporation, as authorized by House Bill 1699. And these funds will be used to construct a fence for that athletic facility that will be used by the Rankin County Youth, and authority to issue that check.
Well, this isn't the first time we've spent money with them, is it?
That's basically, I think, is only 501(c)(3), if I'm not mistaken.
I know, we've done-
We've done, um, money to Northwest Rankin, but I don't know it's been through the Athletic Association, I don't know, because it's been-
Yeah, this has nothing, this, this has nothing to do with the school.
That's nothing.
I know, I know. I don't remember when we first did it, we went out there with a big check had made up, gave to them. Years ago.
You're talking about the one on 470, uh?
Yeah. 471, right.
That's what this is, isn't it?
Same, same.
Well, they just added some fence to it, I guess.
Same association, but different fields. Um, these are the soccer fields off of Spillway.
Oh, okay.
So are they not, it's 501(c)(3)?
They are 501(c)(3).
Okay. Alright.
It's the same, same association.
Okay, gotcha.
Got a motion-
It's attorney language here, yeah.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by myself.
Sorry.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I'm going to let Craig say, gee, this is some more longer language here.
Yeah, I was curious about that.
Yeah, alright, this is following the special election in November, uh, that was set up for November. Uh, only one candidate qualified for District 4 constable, that's Mr. Wyndham. And because the qualifying deadline came and passed, and no independent candidate qualified, the election commission is authorized by law to certify that there's only one candidate who can stand for the special election. And because of that, there's no need to conduct a special election.
Gotcha.
It's not like a normal election, this is a special election. So this is a unique circumstance where if you're unqualified candidate, you don't have to go on the ballot, which helps immensely for your ballot prep for November.
It's almost identical to what election commissioner for District 3, basically, same thing happened.
Probably getting an election commissioner.
Okay.
That's how I read it, I didn't say Wyndham, but I remember.
Yep.
This, this is your, this is your formal action-
Thought we had one resigned.
That will get transmitted to the Secretary of State, so the Secretary of State understands why there is no candidate for that office on the ballot.
Right, so we don't have to, basically, we don't have to have an election.
We're done.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The next item is adoption of amended ordinance establishing a speed limit for Old Highway 49.
What is it?
Thirty-five. Your, your lawyer gooed on the prior amendment, our, the prior ordinance, setting it at twenty-five, and that's way too slow.
What is it currently?
Thirty-five's pretty slow, too.
Yeah, thirty-five is the, uh, is the speed limit present, so it's identical to what the-
It's thirty-five? I thought it was-
Really? It's thirty-five all the way down, like, going from eighty?
No.
Yeah, I don't know that, Mr. Buster, is there even a speed limit?
What's it in, what's it in Richland, John? Thirty-five through there?
Oh, it's out in the county.
Yeah.
And thirty-five is?
This is, yeah, this is the section where it's gonna be old lady, you know, and, alright, that's all people.
It's what we're working on now.
In the same area where they're having the drainage problem?
Yes.
Let me ask this, and, in all sincerity-
It's not quite ready.
If we change the speed limit to seventy-five, will it speed the project up?
They, they can't complain about the weather, the weather's been great for them.
Okay.
It was right along.
So do I have a-
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
A is adoption of ordinance establishing a speed limit on Old Highway 43.
Which is what? Thirty-five?
Well, I really didn't think that was thirty-five.
This is very rewarding, but it has nothing to do with any asphalt.
Right.
So you don't, you don't need a speed limit right now, huh?
Is this your project also, or your projects gonna be working on, eventually?
Uh, I think in this term.
It's thirty-five.
Thirty-five miles per hour.
And what are you gonna change it to?
Oh, that's-
Gonna leave it same.
That's the proposal, the thirty-five.
Okay, what was that?
It's thirty-five now?
No. What is it? Is it forty-five, fifty, or what?
Oh, forty-three. I believe this is what it is now, see? These, these speed limit things got involved, because that's a state aid project, and they tell you that you have to establish that right.
Okay, so you have to set them.
And in general rule, they recommend you establish that.
It's hard to go thirty-five.
Okay. Even though we have no radar by the county?
I know they're gonna obey it, thirty-five.
Well, as soon as we get it, it's gonna be some good traps right there.
You're not kidding, boy.
Okay.
Well, forty-nine already will be.
So do I have a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I think it's too slow.
Alright, the next is authority for the board president to execute a deed of dedication transferring maintenance of Boyce Thompson Drive from Rankin County to the city of Brandon.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Next is authority to reverse the chargeback for home state exemption reimbursement for the year 2013 for parcel K-16, uh, zero 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 fifty-six.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Alright, under news and training conferences, we have authority to pay registration fees in amount of twenty dollars each for Deputy Barry McHugh, Tyson Burleson, and Dana McLendon to ride the governor's ride for the Wounded Warriors of Mississippi on October 4th on motorcycles from Jackson to the Mississippi Gulf Coast to pay any travel-related expenses.
Got a motion approved.
A and B, so move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson.
Just make a motion to approve the rest.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
It's gotta be some comment, I mean-
Hold on a second.
Because, gee, we wanted to understand it.
Read the rest of it, guys, before we go through it.
What is C, uh, the, the, the money we give them to Brandon, I didn't think that we've been giving them that money.
Yeah, let's-
We have, we have not. C is the authority to issue a check to the city of Brandon Fire Department for annual allocation of funds contingent upon the receipt of the executed fire service agreement. And no, they have not gotten it for the last at least two or three years.
Does it don't, do they, didn't execute the fire agreement, okay.
But it's contingent.
We negotiated a contract with them, where they're paid per run. Per, per every time they respond. Brett has worked out an agreement with that in the form of chief.
Really?
For Brandon Fire, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Is that their-
What's pending now is that they have a newly revised fire service agreement along with a revised response area.
Right.
Uh, and that has already been conditionally approved by both myself and by council for the city. It's in the hands of the fire chief, and from what I understand from the end of last week is that they intend for their board to authorize the execution of that document. So we're gonna be operating under a new fire services agreement with Brandon that tightens up their ESN, because we've got John Shallow, or Walters coming online. And, uh, so, we're all on the same page now.
Well, not all of us, when do we get on the same page?
Well-
After they do, then it comes to us, is that correct? And then both boards?
The, uh, correct. And right now, uh, you're, what you're doing today is approving it, contingent upon them approving it.
Correct. We're just contingent.
It's the standard fire service agreement that we have in place with every other department that reflects their ESN. Uh, and, uh, they're gonna accept the standard allocation, annual allocation, to provide response in that area.
So we're not gonna be providing them all the back gears? The two or three that-
No.
No, sir. The agreement, says if they don't sign the agreement, they don't get their, uh, rebate money.
And y'all show us what that line is, what it changed from to? When are we get ready to vote on it? Or are we voting on it right now?
Uh, I think you got it.
You got it.
So you can see now?
No, the area.
This is a little bit beyond my seat, but since we got a pause deal, uh, I know you ran, ran into some-
Won't show the area, though, yeah.
unfavorable soil conditions where the Walter Station Number Two is gonna be constructed. Has Brett already ordered the building? I mean, are there thing, time-consuming things going on that can be handled? And all that's in place, once you do get the foundation in?
Everything, and I'm shallow, hold it, and hold it down, and then the dirt. But what we're saying is, they're gonna be reusing, and then it comes back down. That's where, well, actually, no.
No. Have you found out where you're gonna locate the dirt yet?
This is it, it's not coming back to us, this is it.
You have to have their signed document before you sign it.
Are we good with our end?
Yeah. And Brett's happy.
Well, I, I'm not very trusting these days, so, I'd like to know when I'm voting on.
Understand, understand. But, he doesn't sign it unless Brett has signed it, and kind of, yeah.
Okay. You sound, you feel good with it? Okay. So, getting back to that, do I have a motion to accept contingent? Got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Let's read.
Next section is inventory changes, um, we have the following inventory changes in our Claire Ivors from Department 300, which is road and bridges to be sold at auction. And there's an attached list. You could probably take A and B together, the next is the approval of the FY 14 year-end inventory and the disposition of assets.
Motion approved, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I have a question about this, uh, the, not necessarily pay or anything, but why are we, uh, the transferring these people from change to part-time sprayer from larvicide sprayer? Why are we doing those two like that?
Just reflected in the minutes, there is no change in pay or anything, they're just, the Michael Robbins that was the permanent part-time person, the one that does, he's going to just a temporary position, and then, um, David Lay is going to our permanent part-time person. They're just swapping roles now.
Yeah.
They requested that, but Michael Robbins did ask for that. He recently got married, and he's going to.
What?
So we have one person that we kept on year-round, on a part-time basis.
And now it's swapping, he's gonna go to like, just the summer sprayer time, and this other one's gonna be the permanent.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop. Second by myself. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The next part is record various documents to be made from the part of the minutes.
Shall we?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you for extending this to the board meeting.
You're welcome. Hey, uh, on our next, on, I would like to, uh, put on our next agenda for consideration of purchasing notebooks or tablets for us, rather than having these paper every time.
You would?
That way, yeah, that way we can all, uh, have a little more intel, information at our fingertips.
How much are those running?
I don't know, five or six hundred?
Depends on what, what we go with, we could run anywhere between three to six hundred.
You talking about, like, iPads?
Yes.
Paying about six hundred dollars for my iPad, and they're thirty-two to sixty-four, eight and five.
You talking about instead of ba, basically going paperless?
Go paperless.
Maybe going paperless. How, uh, with technology, Rusty?
We can discuss it our next meeting.
Yeah, we can, yeah. Yeah, we can. We can talk about it at the next meeting, but I like that information.
But I want it on our agenda for the discussion.
Okay.
Just for discussion?
Yes.
Alrighty. Uh, looks like we've gone through the review of all the agenda items. Next thing we have is executive session, possible executive session.
Oh, wow. Hey, Ken, I want to ask you a question, Ken.
Hang on just a second here. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to discuss the need to go on executive session.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
So he just pulled over on Third Road, called up, hey, I wish I killed myself.
Oh, they got him. Okay. They gonna do it, yeah. In the car with Ray? Oh, I know, and he did it. Well, he did that anyway, that prime stuff, that. Hey, man. Yes. Man, that's gotta be pretty intense, though. I mean, 'cause they very easily could go from here to there, you know?
Yep.
Peace. Well, yeah, I can't believe we got beat Thursday. Jeez, they had to be some great cheaters.
Got the car?
Yeah, hell yeah. Yeah, they beat us on a scorecard. We shot nineteen under, I don't know, my team shot nineteen under. Yeah, I, I had a stacked team, man. I was like, yeah, if he's gonna win this one, go, you know? Well, let me tell you, that sounds good. He took y'all from the senior teams over every time. Yeah, yeah. Oh, well, they all, the other three are seniors, so I guess just to not inconvenience them, you know, he hit with him. Of course, he only got like a hundred and fifty-yard advantage, you know, on every hole. Well, some of them is, yeah. 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 They're right. Heck, yeah. They definitely, they hit the wedge in their second shot. Where everybody else is at least hitting, you know, whatever, two. So, yeah, it helped them tremendously. But, yeah, heck, number one, number one, it's a long par four, and probably, ain't but a couple holes, people can hit their driver on it. It's a long way. One's one of them. Well, not even, some of them, hell, Hunter hit a, um, high bridge, you know? But, uh, but no, number one, it's far enough down there where he could hit the green. Yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah. So. Now, yeah, I guess we are. I'm gonna give him a hard time tomorrow, so I'll see him tomorrow night. We haven't, uh, Charlie Lanza's could be property. Oh, no, 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 I'm gonna go down to Robbins and Hades, you know? But where's Brian at? Oh, really?
In the last day, do whatever they could do to put some kind of pole in her neck or something.
No way.
Blood scrubbed, stuff, but it was like, I'm ready to take it out.
So what happens?
She just got back to like she was, full blown, I think.
Oh, okay. So she, she can beat? Yeah. That's scary, yeah. I, I thought that, you know, anytime I hear about cancer, like ain't no coming back from like pancreas cancer, ain't no surviving that crap, you know?
My brother had a little bowel pancreas, bankruptness or something.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago.
Are you on our agenda today? All right, good. See you, bud.
Y'all cut your eyes on before you make the motion, Brett.
What is our, uh, what'd you say, legal and personnel?
Litigation matters, fruit boat, uh, I mean, God, operating.
Oh, that's right. All right.
Personnel action obviously deals with this.
Okay, do I have a motion to go in executive session on possible litigation?
So move.
And personnel. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.